Second.
A second, we are back in our public session. Can we rise for the Pledge of Allegiance? I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. I get a motion for the approval of our June 10 minutes.
So moved.
Any discussion about those minutes? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Those are now part of our public record. Donna, correspondence.
No. Okay, we have three pieces of correspondence on the agenda, one letter from Mrs. Kopinski and two emails from Mr. Martinez, and we also have two Oprah requests.
Great, Donna, thanks very much. Our students are off for the summer. We will return with our student representatives back when we start again back in September. With that, we will turn to the report of the superintendent, Dr. Varley.
Good evening, everyone. Welcome to the last board meeting of the 2021 school year. I want to take a brief moment to highlight both the Governor Livingston and CMS ceremonies and to thank both building administrations. They did a fantastic job. I don't know if you noticed, but at the GL graduation ceremony, gowns were randomized and not assigned by gender, and this was done at the request of the class of 2021. In addition, during the ceremony, the graduates announced that the traditional senior class gift was being donated to support the district's DEI initiative. I want to thank the class of 2021 for the courage of their convictions and their dedication to the district mission of inclusion. Tonight is the last board meeting that Donna Felazola will be our Board Secretary for the Berkeley Heights Public Schools. Donna, thank you for your service, and we are definitely going to miss you.
Thank you.
If you're interested in the One Book, One Community Book Club, this summer, we are reading Ibram X. Kendi's How to Be an Anti-Racist. The event will be conducted on the evenings of July 15 and 22 at 7:00 PM via Zoom. We have two evenings to maximize participation. We had a limited number of books available for loan, but they have already been claimed. We are hoping that the discussion will be organic, but have developed a set of prompts if needed. Please email Steve Hopkins, our Director of Special Projects, and he will put you on the email distribution list. And tonight, we will discuss the traffic study conducted by Dynamic Traffic Engineering. We have evaluated the study and determined what the district can do and what we will need to coordinate with the town. We have spent meetings working with the Berkeley Heights Public Police Department, the Town Engineer, and all of our building principals. I'll now turn it over to Ms. Felazola, who will give her last and final presentation for the Berkeley Heights Public Schools.
Good evening, everyone. As Dr. Varley mentioned, tonight, we're going to give an overview of the traffic study and the recommendations of the traffic engineers. The board hired Dynamic Traffic to conduct a traffic study at the elementary schools. The method, the methods that they used, the methods that they used included site evaluations and observations, interviews with the building principals and the Berkeley Heights Traffic Office. Pat Downey from Dynamic Traffic, who worked with John McCormick to complete the traffic study, is with us tonight and will discuss some of the major recommendations for each school. The goal of this study was to observe and evaluate drop-off and pickup procedures at each school and to identify changes that can be made that will help to improve the traffic flow, both on our property and on the surrounding streets. Their recommendations made include both procedural and construction changes. Some changes will be easy to implement and will have an immediate impact, while others will take time to plan. Some of the common recommendations for all four schools, including having more staff available at both pickup and drop-off times to move the process along more quickly, increasing the number of pick-off and drop-up and drop-off locations at each school, and distancing the pickup and drop-off locations. The four traffic studies were conducted in mid-May. On May 26, we met with the Berkeley Heights Police Department and the Town Engineer to review the recommendations. We then discussed the recommendations with the principals, and we have plans to implement them for the start of the school year. We'll continue to monitor these changes and see what further improvements we can make. Some of the recommendations are more complex and more expensive. They are things that are out of our direct control, and we'll work with the town and the county as necessary to coordinate the implementation of these recommendations. Overall, there were 40 recommendations, and our plan is to implement 25 of these recommendations by the time school starts. We will continue to evaluate the remaining recommendations and work with the town and county to get as many of those implemented as possible. When we talk about student safety, we're not only talking about drop-off and pickup, but we're also talking about the walking routes and how students are getting to school. Traditionally, in the summer, before school starts, the district meets with the traffic officers, and we review walking paths and the placement of crossing guards. We will continue this practice and plan to meet with the police over the summer to evaluate some of these walking paths and the placement of crossing guards. Traffic studies were also conducted at the middle school and the high school, and we anticipate getting those results within the next two weeks. And I would like to share my screen, and Pat Downey is also here, and he will share his screen in a minute with the, with some aerial views and some of the recommendations. So when some of the things that Dynamic Traffic looked at were enhancing student safety, improving and organizing the traffic flow, improve parent drop-off and pickup experience, reduce the queues, improve walkability to schools, improve bike ability to school, and increase the parking supply. The recommendations were categorized as procedural, short-term, long-term, and then we identified categories for implementation. So we categorized them as things we can do for September. The recommendations are hoping to complete by the 21, 22 school year, and then there are some that are just going to take longer, and we have to be determined. There's a sheet of recommendations for each school. There are eight recommendations at Woodruff. Mary Kay has nine recommendations. There are 10 recommendations from Mountain Park. And Hughes has the most at 13. I do see that Patrick is here, and he is going to share his screen. He's going to talk about the, some of the more important recommendations for each school, and these are things that we are going to implement for September. So, Mike, if you can promote Patrick.
Already done.
Okay, thank you.
Hi, can everyone hear me?
Yes.
Great. Good evening, everyone. Thanks, Donna. As she mentioned, my name is Patrick Downey. I'm a project manager at Dynamic Traffic. Just to give a quick background on us, we're an engineering firm specializing in traffic engineering and transportation planning. It's myself and John McCormick from our office who prepared this study. We're both licensed professional engineers in the state of New Jersey, and we prepare these types of traffic and parking evaluations all the time on a regular basis. I was going to give a little background for the whole study, but I think Donna did a great job at that, so we can just jump right in. And I'm going to share some aerial images of each of the schools and just go through one or two key recommendations for each that are going to be implemented for this coming school year. Can everyone see that? Great.
Yes.
Okay. So first up, we have William Woodruff. Couple of things stood out to us when we observed this site. The number one thing is that the traffic flow using this front drop-off loop, if you can see my cursor here, is pretty disorganized currently. There's a lot of what we're calling leapfrogging, where cars are pulling in and out in front of each other and back of each other as they go to park to do their drop-off or pickup activity and pull the way to leave. So the number one thing we want to do is try to separate the traffic in two ways. First is by grade level, and second is to separate the buses from the cars. So what we're envisioning as far as buses is to use the first 100 feet or so of this northern drop-off loop for the buses. It's the easiest for them to pull into, and it will help separate them from the car activity. I think based on the striping that's currently there in the field, that's the intent of what should be happening now, but we did observe some parents using that space and some buses using the other space. We just want to keep it separated. Additionally, kindergarten specifically, we want to create a separate drop-off area for them. Next year, kindergarten is going to be here. They might need some additional assistance getting in and out of the vehicle compared to the older grades that are here today. So in the rear staff parking lot, we're planning to make this a one-way counterclockwise loop with a drop-off right here in the back of the building. That does a couple of things for us. Number one, it reduces the activity in the front of the school, so that should be further organized. And second, it gives those kindergartners a secluded space away from the bulk of the activity to take their time getting in and out. Additionally, like Donna mentioned, we want to provide staff assistance anywhere there's this activity happening. So that's in three main locations here. First is in the front loop, second is in the kindergarten loop, and third is in the walking trail to Ferndale because there's some pickup-drop-off activity occurring there. We want to make sure it's staff-assisted as students are walking back and forth, particularly starting next year when the grade levels are younger. Next up, we have Mary Kay McMillan. The main and obvious observation here is that there's a delay in the morning where students aren't allowed to enter the building. So what you have as a result is the students arrive, they can't get out, and there's tons of vehicles just sitting on the property, unable to leave because they still are the student. It queues up in the drive aisles toward the driveway and the back onto the street. So the big improvement that could be done here that we're recommending is to allow those students to enter the building earlier in the morning. Based on our conversations with Donna, we understand that the school is going to provide staff assistance starting earlier to allow that to happen, so the vehicles can exit the site earlier and make room for the other vehicles that are coming in behind them. Similar to Woodruff, we also want to separate the activity to further organize things. We have two main options at this site. We have this front short loop at the front door of the building and the long loop to the western drop-off area next to the playground. How we plan to use that is to reserve the first 40 feet or so of the front loop for buses to put them close to the front of the door. They're bringing the biggest volume of students, and we want them to have enough time to unload separate from the rest of the traffic activity that's occurring. And similarly, we want to put the youngest students in the safest locations. That's the pre-K for next year. They will get to use the remainder of this front drop-off loop. The other grades, K1 and 2, they would continue to use this western drop-off loop. You can see the arrows on the pavement here. And finally, it's a little difficult to see in this aerial, but those familiar with the site will know that along this exit driveway to the west here, there's a row of parallel parking. We're recommending that those spaces either be relocated or removed in order to increase the usable width of this driveway. The key there is currently this only provides one lane to exit for both left and right turns. By freeing up that space, you can strike that driveway as two separate lanes, one for left and one for right. We should make it easier for parents to just get out and be on their way, but also clear those vehicles more quickly to make room for the other vehicles that are trying to come in behind them. Next up, we have Mountain Park. I'm just going to zoom in a little bit so you can see through these trees. We have two, again, two main access opportunities at this site. Both go to the same place, which is this front curb line of the school where all the pickup and drop-off activity occurs, and there's two ways to get there. There's this northern, I'll call it the inner loop, and the southern outer loop. What we want to do is reserve the use of that outer loop that's a little more secluded for the users who are going to need it most. So number one, again, that's the buses. By allowing a bus to come here and make a large sweeping turn that they might need, they can unload here without being in the hustle and bustle of the rest of the parent pickup and drop-off activity. Something else we're envisioning for that space is potentially allowing certain families to do their drop-off there. If there's a family with a student with special needs, anything like that, that might need additional time getting in and out of the vehicle, an arrangement could be made with the school to allow those parents to use that space as well. And the remainder, the parental drop-off activity, we just use the front loop, go across the aisle, and unload at the curb line, just like they do today. Again, we'll reiterate, staff assistance is key to all of these operations. We'll obviously have staff assistance in this front lot and also on the walking paths that exist to the south and to the east, to Rutgers Avenue and to Mountain Avenue. There's currently pickup-drop-off activity occurring on the streets today, which does alleviate some of the congestion in front of the site. But we just want to make sure that there's staff assistance because some of these walks are a little long, they're through trees. We just want to make sure kids are safe and supervised while they're doing that walk. And lastly, a big safety thing is restricting vehicles further from being able to drive to the rear of the school. Currently, a pretty wide open C pavement. There's nothing really stopping here physically a vehicle from going in the back here, where you can see there's clearly play activities occurring with the students spending time back there. We don't want cars to be able to get back there freely, so putting some sort of temporary movable barrier that just at least discourages the normal general public from going back there. Lastly, we have Thomas Hughes. Again, we want to separate the grade level traffic activity to the best of our ability. Here for buses, we're envisioning reserving the frontmost area at the north end of the site by what I'll call the playground door. For the buses, put them front and center again. Behind them, using that same front loop in the playground door would be grades four and five. And the biggest change would be trying to make use of this space in the front of the site with the other door for grade three. So again, it's putting the youngest grade by themselves in a safer, more isolated location, separated from the other schools, other grades, excuse me, that also reduces the intensity occurring at the north side. Next, from a traffic safety perspective, we would like to clarify what's going on at the north end of the site here, which I'm circling. There's two one-way aisles that converge before going to the exit driveway, and it's a little unclear today who has the right of way there, who's supposed to yield to who. So we think by adding some signage and striping there, we can make that a safer environment. And lastly, similar to the other school, we have a wide driveway here. It's not restricted by parking currently, but it is only striped as one lane. So you have sufficient width there to strike the exit driveway as separate left and right turn lanes to, again, just alleviate traffic on the site and clear people out faster. It's not so critical here as it was on the other one because you have more storage available before it would really impact onsite operations. But again, once you drop someone off or pick someone up, you just want to get out of there as quickly as possible, and by striping an additional lane, it allows you to do that more quickly. So overall, these improvements are just intended to organize traffic flow a little better, help alleviate some of the congestion that might be occurring at these schools currently, and just improve pedestrian safety for students, parents, teachers, everyone. We think it's excellent that the board is able to implement some of these so quickly for this coming school year. And like Donna mentioned, there's a whole list of additional recommendations that you all can consider as you're doing future planning for each of these schools.
Right. Thank you, Patrick. Again, we think you came up with great ideas, and it's good to have a fresh set of eyes to look at what we're doing every day and to find and to uncover ways to do it better. Does the board have any questions?
Any questions for either Donna or Patrick on this mic? Go ahead.
Just a question. So there are some of the striping recommendations, signage recommendations. Will we be getting a set of plans to be able to get quotes, bids, et cetera, to implement this as part of the study?
Most of these recommendations are pretty simple. That certainly we could do, something we could do. It wasn't prepared as part of this traffic study, but yeah, any engineer could put a plan like that together.
Even just having an overall floor plan that notes everything because it's,
Yeah.
it's, you know, we have the aerial view that that has not, doesn't have any notes versus the listing that's provided. I did have a question for you, Donna, with regards to some of the items that require like DOE approval or township approval. Do, is there a timeframe and a duration for like different approvals for each of these items that we can sort of document? So we know, you know, when, when do we need to, when do we need to make a decision so that we can implement so that we have an idea of lead time for that?
In a, in a standard, normal world, the DOE has a 90-day, they try to get approvals done within 90 days. We know that they've been backlogged because of the pandemic and different staffing issues that they've had down there. So it is taking a lot longer to get approvals, and I think that's standard. The town usually can approve things a little bit more quickly and efficiently.
So everything that, where it says township approval is needed and implemented by September 1st, is it, has, have we received all the township approvals for everything, or is it's?
The things that we're implementing by September 1st generally don't need township approval. There might be one or two that we need to coordinate with the police. I think one of them was for extra, you know, extra police presence at the school, so we still have to work that out with them.
Okay.
So that's going to be happening over the summer. Yes.
So.
But I think some of the items that are being recommended, like just a fence, maybe a simple permit that is needed, no different than anything, nothing that is major reconstruction or procedural items.
Some of the drainage issues might take longer to get approval from, and you know, we'd have to do a larger study to determine what we want to do to address drainage or changes to the landscape.
Right.
Are there any other questions from the board?
Yes, I have a question for the engineer. So Patrick, at the beginning of your commentary, you, you know, you stated that you do this regularly for, you know, other organizations, school systems, et cetera. The Finance and Facilities Committee, we went over these in detail last week at the committee level, and one of the things I think that really struck me was regardless of full-day kindergarten implementation, I mean, these are things that, you know, we should have been doing. And so my, my question is, how often do you think a school district should entertain a traffic study? You know, is it every five years, every 10 years? Because I don't think we've done one in a very long time. And some of these things are, you know, you actually look at them and you go, duh.
Right.
Really? And so, you know, I'm just curious as to what your recommendation would be, how, how frequently things change that you should take a look at, at, at stuff like this as a board.
Yeah, I think twofold. So number one, I think the board internally should have these types of conversations on a pretty regular basis, maybe once a year as a recap for how did the school year go, or twice a year, something like that. Because you guys see this every day, but honestly, you understand the operations that better than we do. What we just bring to the table is the engineering knowledge and the fresh set of eyes to be able to actually make itemized, actionable improvements that you can implement. So, you know, I would say do it every year, frame you back every time, but in reality, I don't think you need to quite do that. I would say if anything's going to change, like you're going to expand the district, or you're going to reallocate spaces, or just if things don't seem to be working, if you're getting a lot of complaints either from the staff or the parents, that would be a trigger to start thinking about maybe bringing in a fresh set of eyes to take a look.
Thank you.
Patrick, Donna, can you put your PowerPoint slide back up on the screen for a second?
Okay.
Patrick, first of all, thank you very much, Patrick, for the aerial view for very helpful as you walked us through and visualize what those changes are. I want to just pause for a second. Donna went through this. This, that's fine. You can just leave it right, right, right there. It's fine. Donna put this up pretty quickly, and we will post these on our website tomorrow. But what, what you're looking at here is Hughes has 13 recommendations. The ones that are highlighted in light blue on the far right, those are the ones that we're going to implement by September, and you can see where we think there's Department of Ed approval needed or town to approval. And the way to look at this is the things that we can do by ourselves within our own control, we're going to do those as expeditiously and as cost-contained as we can. Where we need to partner with somebody, whether that be the Department of Ed, whether that be the township, whether that be the county, whether that be the police department as part of the township, or the engineer, we're going to work together and partner with all those groups. In a second, I'm going to have Jason Massimino speak for a second. A number of people on Jason's team are on the call tonight and have worked with Donna, both in the study as well as listening to the readout. So I'm going to have Jason make a comment in a second. But so the way to look at this really is everything that we can get done to improve safety within, within our budget for this year, we will get done this summer. All the other items that you see as labeled as either short-term capital or long-term capital, well, then our facilities committee and all the partnerships I just mentioned are going to work together, and we'll do those in a prioritized way. I suspect some of them will get done in the 21, 22 school year that we can prioritize. And I think some of the other ones are TBT, some of them are longer-term, require more work, more engineering work, potentially more costs and more interaction or integration with those, with those groups. And again, there's one of these for each school. At a high level, there are 40 items across the four schools. 25 of them, so roughly 62% of those will get done this summer. So think of that as 25 of the 40 will get done by September of this year, and of course, the remaining 15 are the ones that are harder. With that, Jason Massimino, I assume you're out there. Jason, do you want to just comment? I know a couple of your fellow officers are on the call today and have participated there, so I thought I'd just give you a chance to chime in as well.
Thank you, and good evening to everybody. Sergeant Aphenino, who worked with Donna and Masheon on the traffic study as well as Dr. Varley, he's on the call, and Lieutenant Gaffney of Support Services. I just want to say congratulations to Donna on her retirement. She'll be sorely missed. We've worked with, obviously, in partnership with the school for a long time, and I appreciate the school district allowing us, the administration, to be involved in this traffic study. I'm looking at all the recommendations like everyone else. I think they're going to help greatly, and obviously, anything that we could do as the police department to be of assistance, we're here. Thank you.
Great, Jason, thanks very much. As most people know, we have a, I don't know, 30-plus-year partnership with the police department in looking at all the different safety and security things at our schools. We will continue that this summer. There'll be an even greater emphasis on that, given the realignment. So Jason, thanks, and thanks to all the members of your team who you just called out for partnering with us as you always do. Are there any other questions from board members? Okay, not seeing any. Donna, thank you.
I do have one. Will we have a formal presentation similar to this for the middle school and the high school? When that, I think Donna said it was going to be completed in a couple of weeks.
Yes, we will.
We'll have the same process.
Same process.
That's great.
Whatever the recommendations are, we'll do that. We'll prioritize that as such. Obviously, we prioritize the elementary schools first.
Thank you.
Okay, Donna, thank you. Patrick, thank you. I'm Dr. Varley. Are there any, anything else in your superintendent's report this evening?
That concludes my superintendent's report.
Great, thank you, Dr. Varley. Moving on to liaison reports. Are there any liaison reports tonight? Not, not seeing any. He has reports. We'll move on. Donna, facilities report.
Oh, okay.
That was you, Donna. Okay.
Yeah, I want to see if I could share my screen again. I have one slide on subscription busing. So the Finance and Facilities Committee met, and we talked about the traffic study, but we also discussed subscription busing. And this was something that the public had brought to our attention. And this was something that the public had brought to our attention. Public had brought this to our attention, concerns about the cost of subscription busing. So we looked at the number of students who signed up for subscription busing. There was a total of 158 students, 125 of these were in grades K to five. We looked at the financial impact of this and what the board is recommending is a discount. A family discount for students in grades K to five. So if you have more than one student going to the same school, you would pay a flat fee of $500. When, when we looked at the number of students who had signed up for subscription busing, this will impact about 20 families. And it would give them that break if their students are going to the same schools. We, at this point, everyone who has applied for subscription busing has been assigned to a route. The bus routes and the pickup times and locations will be sent out in August. And if people want to continue with the subscription busing, we will be sending out an email shortly with information about paying for it. I want to feedback from the board regarding the financial tier that we came up with at the, at the Finance Committee meeting.
So, so thank you, Donna. So just to recap, so the Finance and Facilities Committee met and, and agreed and recommends that proposal. So for, for those that weren't in that, so Jordan, Joy, Robert, I'm just making sure that you are in alignment with the subscription busing proposal, which is basically what we've said all along with one clarification, which is a 4K to five, it is one price per household. And again, that came up a number of times with parents' feedback and we are, we are meeting that, meeting that need. So again, it'll be one price per household. And if, so it is, it's the recommendation of the, of that committee and I want to make sure that it has the full support of the board going forward.
Yes, full support and thank you very much for doing that.
Yeah.
Yep, agree.
Okay, okay, good. So by, by voice vote, we will move forward with that subscription busing proposal. Donna has already, and Kelly have already been in contact with those families who have indicated interest. And we will move forward for that and helping out those families. Okay, Donna, other, other facilities.
I have one other item to discuss. On the, on the agendas tonight, you'll see two resolutions referencing the toilet room upgrades at the Mary Kay and Woodruff. And we've been working with the Department of Ed to get the construction of the toilet rooms approved for the implementation of full day kindergarten. The plans for the bathrooms were orig, were, have been submitted twice now. Originally, they were submitted in March of 2020 as part of the referendum plans. And then they were submitted in March of 2021 as part of the long range facility amendment. As I mentioned before, the DOE has been backlogged since last year, since COVID. People were working from home and the number of people left to do reviews was reduced to two due to retirements. We received approval of the long range facility plan earlier this month. And we anticipated that that approval would be adequate for the town to issue permits for the work to begin. Didn't work out that way, so now we are resubmitting the projects to the Department of Ed as separate standalone projects. That is one of the resolutions on the agenda to resubmit those projects. And we are being careful and cautious. So just in case we don't receive DOE approval in time for the construction to be completed by September. We also have a resolution applying for a toilet room waiver, which is a standard form that the DOE has, which will allow us to offer to have the students in the kindergarten classrooms being walked to the bathrooms. And bathrooms are close enough to the classrooms to make this possible. So there would be a power or an aid in the classroom that would help those students get to the bathroom. So those are two resolutions on the agenda referencing the implementation of kindergarten and being prepared for September and having toilets in the classrooms.
Great, thanks, Donna. Any questions for Donna on facilities, on that facilities report? Okay, Donna, thank you for that. Okay, we are going now going to move to the preliminary citizens hearing. This is the time where residents can ask questions about items that are only on the agenda. We will have a second hearing for other items. To be recognized, please ensure your first and last name is listed on your device and use the raise your hand function. I will unmute you, which allows you to come off mute and address the board. If you have more than one question, please ask them all at the beginning. The board recognizes student and staff members' right of privacy and therefore encourages all members of the public to address their concerns regarding individual students or staff members by meeting privately with the appropriate administrative staff. While addressing the board in a public forum, members of the public should refrain from identifying any students or staff members by name and are solely responsible for comments which could be considered defamatory or slanderous, according to the laws of the state of New Jersey. Each resident will have three minutes to speak. With that, I will open the citizens' hearing for agenda items only. And the first person I see is Rich Lander. Rich, good evening. How are you tonight?
I'm fine, thank you. Can you hear me?
I can hear you loud and clear.
Great, thank you. I'm a GL, 1972 alumni and my children went through the system also. My comment is regarding school safety walkabilities. I mentioned, I should have noticed that was listed in some of the points. The walkability point is the sidewalks are sometimes impacted by shrubbery and trees. I suspect there are regulations for property owners to maintain clearance. Is there something we could do? It's no cost to the school system. It's not a, I suspect there's nothing that needs a lot of scheduling. Is there some way we can get property owners to maintain the clearance on the sidewalks?
Rich, thanks for your question. I'm sure there is. My, my initial thoughts are, is to, you know, partner with the township and create reminders. It reminds me of when they remind you that you have to shovel your sidewalk when the snow is there in the winter. It reminds me that maybe we need to have additional reminders, both that we could send as well as that the township could send to remind people to do that, whatever that clearing is and make them more, more walkable. So thanks for the suggestion. I'm sure we can do that and to get, to get some improvements there. So.
Is this something you will follow up on? I should be following up on?
No, you can leave that with us. We have our, our facilities team and we'll make sure that, that we do that. We can, you know, I believe some of that, I have, I've done a check with that. I believe there are some ordinances around maintaining whatever that walkability is, but we'll reach out to the township administrator. And we'll, we'll partner with them. I think we can, the other thought I have is, you know, we can use some of our communications that Dr. Varley sends out. And we can remind people of that as well as make sure that the township, you know, can share some of those recommendations as well. So leave that with us and we'll follow up with, with those groups accordingly.
Okay, thank you.
Rich, thanks for your comments tonight. Next person I see is Tom Farger. Tom, good evening.
Good evening, Doug. What is the effect of resubmitting of the bathroom projects as an other capital project? Does it have the way to review for educational adequacy? That's the first question. Second question is, what is the number of registered students at this current time for full day kindergarten? Next question is, why can't the library work be done by staff in the fall after school reopens? Next question, why not, why not hire just the two friends and not the daughter of the superintendent? For that, for the library work? And the last question is, for which projects are you putting aside money into the cap reserve and how much for each one? That's it.
Something for your questions. I got five on your question list. Let's, let's take them one at a time. Donna, let's take the first one with you. When we resubmit the other projects, I believe what we're told is they are now included for educational adequacy. So when we do submit the revised one with just those standalone projects, it will go through the educational adequacy. Is that correct?
Yes, it'll go through educational adequacy.
Good. So the answer to that is yes, Tom, it will go through that. Dr. Varley, the number of full day kindergarten students?
I haven't looked today, but the last time I looked, it was at 133.
Okay, 133. And the next question, I think Dr. Varley is, is for you in terms of, I know there's a lot of library work to be done this summer. Both in terms of realigning the libraries, making them appropriate for the new grade structure. Do you want to talk about that and as well talk about the people that you're hiring to do that?
So we do need to get the Woodruff Library up and running for a K to two school. We're also transferring all the books that were at Woodruff that were fourth and fifth grade. We're leaving some behind because we do have, there are second grade readers who are excellent reading. So we will leave some of those behind, but we're going to have to transfer, we're going to have to organize, we're going to have to shelve and make Woodruff a K to two library plus distribute the older children books amongst Hughes and Mountain Park. We are hiring two of our current media specialists to work this summer at, to help us out with that. Because we do, we think the K to two students need to walk in and be able to see a library like the other schools have. And we had four people apply for the internship. My daughter was one of them. The, one of the other people declined when they found out it was $12 an hour. So out of the three people who were willing to take the $12 an hour, my daughter is one of them. And it is allowed to happen because it's a temporary position.
Sorry, I'm on mute. And the last question was regarding the capital reserve that we have an agenda item to move into the capital reserve. Donna, we don't have a set of projects right now aligned to that capital reserve, correct? That's something that we do each year to build up our capital reserve. And it's for a long term project. So I think the answer to Tom's question is, we don't have specific projects aligned to that. Is that a correct statement?
That's correct. We can, you can make a designated deposit or you can make an undesigned deposit. So this is an undesigned deposit.
Great, Donna, thanks very much. Next I see is Todd Nigery. And Todd, good evening.
Yes, good evening. Can you hear me?
I can hear loud and clear.
Okay, great. Thank you very much. So I just would like to follow up regarding the comments regarding the library intern. Where and when was the library intern position posted or listed? And did you ask for volunteers, adults or parents before voting to pay upwards of $1,500 regarding the wages? Regarding the transportation study, there was not, not one comment about walkability for students. It was only about drop off and pickup. Can you please share what you began to do as a plan presented that walkability would be increased by the new plan that was presented and voted on and accepted by different board members? Additionally, it was stated this evening that there would be additional costs. What part of these costs will be covered by the town? Can you itemize this as the impacts to taxpayers? Example, additional police at schools. That sure seems like potentially a taxpayer impact. On 429 at the meeting, Joy asked about who will cover the cost of crossing guards. Doug replied that the district would. Do you still feel this is correct? I think it's possibly the town. So I'm very curious to get your opinion of that. And again, that goes to the town expenses and what the impact will be to taxpayers. So are you able to present a, a plan that actually has an impact to the town that is clear? Because I think the plan presented didn't actually clearly state now the impact to the town. The traffic tide, this traffic study and the costs associated should have been presented with the plan. To do this after the fact, after board, board members have voted, seems to be a complete miss. How can you approve a plan and not fully understand the costs? Again, speaking to the fact that the traffic study should have been done and conducted prior to the plan being presented. We should have all known all of this and the scenarios that were just presented in the PowerPoint only reflect very minimal impact to the actual buildings themselves. It does not, again, increase walkability. So again, I think to approve a plan without these measures is really, it's, it's a miss. And then additionally, how do you approve a plan that doesn't actually have DOE sign off? And now we're talking about X amount of months later, DOE still hasn't had a sign off and you're blaming the New Jersey state for a backlog. But yet, this sign off should have actually occurred prior to with knowing that the plan was being presented. Because now the plan is specifically changed. And I know at the last meeting, it was requested, would the plan be, be written and put out? And I would like to actually request that again. Thank you very much.
Great, Todd, thanks for your questions. Let me do them kind of one at a time. Dr. Varley, I wanted to ask the first one about the interns, the library interns posted versus volunteers.
Yes, so we post all of our jobs on our website and it also is an Apple track. Then it shoots out to K-12 Ed Jobs, which is a, a national source for educators, interns, parapros, bus drivers, et cetera.
So no parent or community involvement was sought or the, that posting actually goes out to the community? Sorry, I'm just trying to clarify that.
We, we list them all on the website and, you know, our jobs are up there. We do have plenty of community members who apply for different jobs that we have. But we don't send them out to the community.
Okay, thanks. Thank you. Second question, Todd, regarding, I think you were talking about the transportation and walkability. So as we've talked all along, there were two elements to our transportation study and, and safety and security. Item number one is what you just heard from Donna and Patrick tonight, which was the engineering report around the drop off, pickup, traffic flows at the schools. The second part of walk, what you called walkability is what we're also doing this summer. And that's exactly what you said, looking at walkability, looking at the sidewalks, looking at the crossing guard locations. Looking at a number of people talked about the railroad crossings. And that is something that we will jointly do with the police department and the engineer if it's needed. And we'll be doing that this summer. It's what we do every summer when our, our transportation team, Donna and Kelly Sheen partner with the police department and their traffic safety officers and do that. So that is planned to be done this summer. Of course, we'll provide updates to that, but walkability. And I've, I've talked about this a number of times. There's a two part plan to this. The third question around crossing guards, I believe I misspoke at, at that meeting. I think I've corrected myself once before. And Donna confirmed this for me, but the, the township pays for the crossing guards. That, that's not a school expenditure. Is that correct?
That's correct. The town pays for them.
So, so, so Todd, I spoke at that meeting and it is the township. So it is a joint conversation with the police department around the schools. Obviously, the alignment of the schools and the crossing guards, but that is a township cost. Regarding your fourth and last question was the Department of Ed sign offs. I don't, I don't believe, I think you used the word blaming. I don't know that we're blaming the Department of Education for not having the sign offs. We obviously sent plans down to them hoping to have them approved in advance. Those, those plans were not approved in advance. To say that we didn't have the impact and understand that, I don't, I don't agree with that. We are waiting for the, for the plans to be approved. Your, your last point was around the traffic study and do we know all of the exact costs? And were those presented when we discussed this on April 29th? Yes, of course, there's no, we didn't know all those plans. We knew we had to do the traffic study. We knew there were going to be some costs for that. We do have budgeted to do improvements like, like that, that we expected. And obviously, we will do those ahead. But yes, you are correct. We did not know those at the time of the April 29th meeting. Todd, thanks for your questions. Next person is Sai Fugarvi. Sai, good evening. How are you tonight?
Good evening, Todd. Good evening, Doug. Good. So my question is in regards to the, I think in the facilities report, Donna mentioned that we submitted these projects or the long, in March 2020 for the toilet or the bathroom upgrades. And then they were also submitted in Jan, I think, in 2021. So if these bathroom projects were submitted for educational adequacy back in March 2020, why were the public told that when we asked in March, when we found out from some of the staff and at Woodruff, and we asked you before the April 8th meeting, is can you disclose the plan? Are you converting William Woodruff into, from a two to five, from a three to five? Are you converting William Woodruff into, from a two to five, from a three to five, from a two to five model? We were told that the plan is not ready. We're working on the plan and the plan will only be disclosed in April. So how did the district or, you know, whoever submitted these requests for educational adequacy review in March twenty twenty know that we will, we had a need to build the bathrooms? And now coming back to that, the need to build the bathrooms is to convert William Woodruff from the current model to an early childhood center. So was that a misstatement that you, that the board, like the, all the board members were not aware? And again, this is a question to all the elected representatives, not just you and Dr. Warley. Is, were only the people who were on the facilities committee aware of this? Or was every elected representative aware that these plans for review to the Department of Ed were submitted in twenty twenty? And then in the, in March twenty twenty-one, we were told that we can't disclose the plans and then the plan is not ready. So I feel that it's kind of, it's very ambiguous or it's basically not conveying the point. Like if you were, if, if the district knew to submit back in March twenty twenty that we needed to construct the bathrooms to make full day kindergarten happen, why weren't the public informed? Like all I'm, I'm, and where I'm coming from is my daughter is impacted along with about hundred and thirty-six kids. And if we would have planned and prepared better, especially during a global pandemic, if we were told back in twenty twenty that this is something that's happening. And I think Donna also mentioned that this was presented as part of a referent, like, you know, as part of a referendum requirement. So maybe it would have been better to communicate and let us know and be more transparent with the, you know, the residents. Also, the second question in regards to the facilities report was, I think, two meetings prior to this one, we were told that many, like permits were applied, material was being procured. I have an outstanding Oprah request on the finalized contract for Salazar. I haven't received it yet. As of, I think the last update was around in early June where it was said that it's still an attorney and architect review. So what is the status of that? And if the contract is not yet finalized, then why was the contractor, like I think he's already been issued a PO? And why were the materials procured, especially given the fact that we still don't even have Department of Ed approvals? Thank you.
Great, Sai, thanks for your two questions. I'll take the first one. You're, 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 the words you used was, did we make a misstatement by, by submitting plans twice, once in twenty twenty and once in twenty twenty-one? And then present to the public on April eighth? The answer to that is a, is a categorical no. We didn't make a misstatement. The, the plan that was presented on April, on April eighth of twenty twenty-one had multiple components. That facilities was one piece of that, but there was a lot that went into that. So we, as we've talked about in many times before, it was, it took us until April eighth to develop a full presentation, vet that with our committees and be able to share, to share that. There were components of that, as you indicated, obviously that facilities as part of the referendum was done last year. But no, I do not agree with you. That was a misstatement, nor did we mislead anybody. We said all along that that, that we'd be ready to share a full comprehensive plan on April eighth, like we did. A second question, Donna, the question about the permits and materials. First of all, what is the, what is the status of the Salazar contract? Donna, you're on, you're on mute.
The attorney is still working on the contract with Salazar. Obviously, he doesn't, his permit was not approved. So we're kind of being cautious about issuing him that contract. But, but I really don't have anything to share. There is no responsive document for your Oprah request at this time.
One quick follow-up, Doug, don't we have any statutory requirements on how many days do we? So once we accept a contract, isn't there like a twenty-one day or a forty-day requirement to finalize the contract?
Donna?
There's a sixty-day requirement.
And aren't we beyond that at this time?
You know, we are working with Salazar. He's aware of the issues. We would like to get the project done. He would like to get the project done. So he is being flexible with us.
Great, Donna, thanks very much. Liz Kane, good evening, Liz. How are you tonight?
Hi, good evening. So something I noticed on the agenda that I'm excited to just hear more about is the position of the facilitator, teacher of STEAM and enrichment. It also says that the, that person is working with the gifted and talented. Is, I'm just curious to hear more about that position. Is the, is the gifted and talented mean the, what was the Quest program in the elementary schools? And it says it's for the elementary schools. So I'm just curious if it's the same or if it's something new. And if it says the elementary schools, does this mean like overseeing or facilitating the Quest program at Hughes and Mountain Park? Or does this also cover the win periods in the early childhood centers?
So Liz, I can get started on that and then I can turn it over to Scott. He probably has more details. So we knew that we were a little deficient in STEM STEAM in K to five. So we did have a part-time Quest teacher and we decided to go look for a gifted and talented STEAM and enrichment teacher for all K to five buildings. And so we're very excited about it. Scott, do you want to add anything?
Sure, we've been working with Mary Beth Kopas and kind of taking this opportunity to evolve that position and evolve that program to serve more students across the four buildings in the new reconfiguration. So we are excited about this opportunity, moving it forward. It's going to take a lot of work as we evolve that, that will take place over the course of the next year as we build the program. But we are excited about what the opportunities it will provide for our K five students.
Great, thanks to both of you. Okay, great, thanks for that. Thank you, Liz. Tom Farg, you still have your hand up? Did you have a second question, Tom, or did you just forget to lower your hand?
Okay, that's two questions. First of all, I, I was not aware that I had to lower it. I thought it, it sort of gets lowered automatically. I will have, I think, it looks like three, two more questions, but I'm holding them for the final citizens here. This, I think this is only hearing on agenda items.
Right, thank you, Tom. With that, I will close the preliminary citizens hearing. And we will move on to other items. Okay, item thirteen, appointments. Chris? You want to move, you want to move thirteen? Thirteen.
I'll second.
Motion to second on item thirteen, appointments. Any discussion? Roll call.
Mr. Hyman?
Yes.
Mrs. Young? Mr. Chinchuli?
Yes.
Mr. Dequilla?
Yes.
Mrs. Penna?
Yes.
Ms. Riley?
Yes.
Mr. Reinstain?
Yes, administration items number fourteen.
I move administration items A through D.
I'm sorry, I have a second.
Motion and a second. Any discussion? Roll call.
Mr. Hyman?
Yes.
Mrs. Young?
Yes.
Mr. Chinchuli?
Yes.
Mr. Dequilla?
Yes.
Mrs. Penna?
Yes.
Ms. Riley?
Yes.
Mr. Reinstain?
Yes, item fifteen, education.
I move items, education A through B.
Second.
Motion and a second. Any discussion? Roll call.
I'm sorry, Doug. A quick question.
Sorry, go ahead, Angela.
An item A. Can you just talk a little bit about the reading platform, special education?
That is definitely a question for Michelle Gardner. Do you have any information on that? Sorry, I can, I can ask her and see if she can follow up on that.
Okay, roll call.
Mr. Hyman?
Yes.
Mrs. Young?
Yes.
Mr. Chinchuli?
Yes.
Mr. Dequilla?
Yes.
Mrs. Penna?
Yes.
Ms. Riley? Mr. Reinstain?
Yes, item sixteen, personnel. Chris?
Before I move item sixteen, I just thought Dr. Marley might want to say a few words.
So we are extremely excited. We're extremely excited to be recommending, I'm recommending Brenda Marley as the principal of William Woodruff Elementary School. She has been working in the district for over nineteen years. She is our reading specialist at Mary Kay McMillan. She has been instrumental in the success of Mary Kay McMillan. And this past year, she took over for the current principal of Mary Kay McMillan while she was out on medical leave. It was a seamless transition and we are very excited to recommend her as building principal of William Woodruff.
Thank you. So I'm going to move item sixteen, A through HH. But before I do, I'm also going to add item sixteen, Roman numeral two, regarding the hiring of Bren, Brenda Marley, and it reads as follows. Hiring Brenda Marley. It is recommended by the superintendent of schools that the board approve the employment of Brenda Marley of Hillsborough as principal in the Berkeley Heights Public Schools for the twenty twenty-one, twenty twenty-two fiscal year effective August first, twenty twenty-one. Mrs. Marley earned her Bachelor of Arts degree in sociology with a concentration in special education from Douglas College of Rutgers, the state university. And she received her Master's of Education degree with a concentration in reading from the Rutgers Graduate School of Education. She completed her coursework for her principal certification through Kane University. Mrs. Marley has twenty-seven years of experience in public education and she has been employed as a reading specialist at Mary Kay McMillan Early Childhood Center for the past nineteen years. She also served as an interim administer at McMillan during fall of twenty twenty. Her annual salary for twenty twenty-one, twenty twenty-two will be one hundred and twenty-five thousand pro-rated from August first, twenty twenty-one through June thirtieth, twenty twenty-two. And now I move items A through HH and including item Roman numeral two.
I second that.
Great, a motion and a second. Any discussion? The board had a chance to interview and talk with Brenda Marley this evening. And I know I speak on behalf of the board to share the excitement of Dr. Marley and welcoming a, a homegrown new administrator to our team. Roll call.
Mr. Hyman?
Yes, to personnel items A through V.
Mrs. Young?
Yes, all.
Mr. Chinchuli?
Yes, all.
Mr. Dequilla?
Yes.
Mrs. Penna?
Yes.
Ms. Riley?
Yes.
Mr. Reinstain?
Yes, item seventeen, business. Jordan?
I move business items A through O.
I second.
Motion and a second. Any discussion? Roll call.
Mr. Hyman?
Yes, items A through L.
Mrs. Young?
Yes.
Mr. Chinchuli?
Yes.
Mr. Dequilla?
Yes.
Mrs. Penna?
Yes.
Ms. Riley?
Yes.
Mr. Reinstain?
Yes, moving on to finance, item eighteen. Chris?
Yes, I will move items A through D. I approved the bills and everything looked in order. But before I ask for a second, I just want to take this opportunity to say a very special thank you to Donna Filosola as chair of the finance committee for, I don't know, three or four years now. We've worked very close together and she has been an absolute delight and she's taught me a lot. And we will miss you, Donna. And I wish you the best that life can offer and enjoy your new bag. Every day is a vacay.
Yes, thank you.
And I also would just like to say a word about retiring Patty Gasparini. I know she doesn't retire till September first, but I'm looking forward to, you know, being able to celebrate that as well. So again, I'm moving eighteen, A through D.
And I second that, including all your comments.
Motion and a second. Any discussion? Roll call.
Mr. Hyman?
Yes, to item A.
Mrs. Young?
Yes.
Mr. Chinchuli?
Yes.
Mr. Dequilla?
If we say no, that means you can stay past this or? No, yes.
Mrs. Penna?
Yes.
Ms. Riley?
Yes.
Mr. Reinstain?
Yes. We will now move on to the final citizens hearing where members of the public can ask a question on any other topic. The same rules apply that I read for the preliminary citizens hearing, so I will not, I will not read those comments again. Use the raise your hand function. Make sure your name is visible and we'll call on you as you raise your hand. Sai, I see you first.
Hi, again, yeah. So a quick question on the capital transfers that are being done today. So I, I think Donna mentioned that there, these are not for designated projects. I have a basic question on, so we, I think since fall of twenty nineteen, what is our current total in the capital reserve account as of today? And then we are planning, I think, we're transferring eight hundred thousand today. I think that was already voted on. And if we do not have designated projects for these capital reserve transfers, what are the, what are the rules? Like what happens? In how many years do you have to utilize these funds? Or are they like, they just basically stay there and accrue interest or what happens to the money? So I, I think from the last report or the last budget I saw, I think we have close to over, I, I'm not sure about the number, but if you could give me what is the total in our capital reserve account? And what would be the total with this additional transfer? And how long can this money stay there? Also, in the facilities report, Donna mentioned that these bathroom projects for Woodruff and MKM were included as part of, for review because there was going to be a referendum. There was a planned referendum in twenty twenty. So why did the board and the district move away from having a referendum on such a significant change to our district, which is impacting a lot of us? And so what was the reason for not having a referendum is my question. Thank you.
Sai, thanks. I'm, Donna, you want to, the first question about what the balance is and how long does it be there?
Sure, the balance, the balance right now is about a hundred and, it's about one point six million dollars. And the resolution is a not to exceed amount. As we, as we close out the fiscal year, we'll get a better sense of what our true surplus is and then we will make a deposit to capital reserve. The money can sit there and it's there, it's a savings account. It's a way that we put money aside in case we have an emergency, we have to deal with something. It's very common for school districts to have capital reserve accounts. It's really a very financially sound way of budgeting and moving forward. You can have money up there equal to the total sum of all your long-range facility projects, which our long-range facility plan has numerous projects in it. So it would be hard for us to get that much money into a capital reserve account.
Great, thanks, Donna. Aside to your second question about the bathrooms, you correctly stated they were in the referendum when we initially did the referendum. As, as many people know, after COVID or during COVID, the board decided to not go forward with the referendum for reasons, for financial reasons associated with the, with the pandemic. And then the board changed to be able to take the money, in this case, out of capital reserve and found a different way to, to finance that as part of, as part of doing the realignment of the schools. Why did we change? Why did we change? We, we changed because that was the way that we could afford to finance this, this year out of our capital reserve. And the board felt that that was a, a good decision, a way to get this done. And again, we, we shared many times about, that was the way for us to get it done. It wasn't done to, to avoid anything. It was just a way that we, we weren't going to be able to do the referendum. So that's why we chose to do it. I'll add one other thing about, about the capital reserve. It's not only necessary for what Donna called emergency projects. It's also for long-range strategic projects. If you've looked at our history, we have spent money in the past for things like the turf and the track at the high school or security, safety and security updates with the vestibules. So it's not necessarily just for an emergency. It is well-planned, long-range capital planning, capital investments, capital improvements that, that we do. Tom Faragor, you're up next. Good evening, Tom, again.
Good evening, Doug. Thank you. Last time I asked, what was the school configuration for Woodruff and Hughes in the 2020 amendments to the long-range facilities plan? I was surprised to hear that no one on the board knew the answer, despite the fact that most of you voted to approve the amendments. Doug, you said some, Doug said someone would get definitely get back, get the answer. I did, I do not view that as a difficult question. And yet, even after I sent a follow-up reminder on June 16th to Doug and Donna, I have not heard anything from the district. So I still would like the answer. What is the approved long-range facility school configuration for Woodruff and Hughes? And the second part of that is, if the proposed school configuration is a K through two and three through five, which I suspect it is, in January of 2020, when the long-range facility plan amendments were submitted, why did the board not have any public discussion or announcement of this very significant school configuration change in the approximately twenty-two board meetings between January 2020 and April 8th, 2021, when the public was finally told about it?
So Donna, do you want to answer Tom's question about what's in the long-range facility plan?
Sure. The long-range facility plan that was submitted in March of 2021 has a school configuration plan of Woodruff and Mary Kay being, you know, Mary Kay is pre-K to two, Woodruff is K to two, Hughes and Mountain Parker, three to five, that was submitted in March of 2021.
Great, thanks, Donna. Tom, to your question about what was submitted in January and did the board fully know? As similar to my answer to Si, there are a lot of components that go into, that went into our sharing of the overall plan on April 8th. Facilities, of course, was an important one. Some of the details of what is in and what is not in something as detailed as the long-range facilities plan, that's something that, you know, that the facility, the facilities committee is aware of and certainly knows that this is being done in conjunction with our architects. And again, when we shared the plan on April 8th, we shared our overall plan, which had facilities. It had configuration, it had personnel, it had a lot of things that went in there. So again, you know, we didn't feel that giving the public answers in piece parts was really the right answer. Only thinking that if we gave you in piece parts, you didn't really see the whole picture, which is why we waited until April 8th to give out the whole plan. Next up is Liz Kane. Liz, good evening again.
Hi, thanks. So I was muted at the end, so I was legitimately excited about the STEM coordinator, STEAM coordinator, just so you know. So I'm excited and I've known Ms. Genoa for years for her volunteering. So I think it's an excellent fit. So my off-agenda question is about going forward in like the August meeting and so on. Is the format going to remain the same as it is right now with everybody on headphones? And I know like the limited amount of people who have, you have to sign up to attend the board of ed meetings? Or is it going to open up? Is there a plan to modify this or have just take it maybe off a Zoom or conference room speakerphone? So everyone doesn't have to mute, unmute on their own devices if they're in person?
Great, Liz, thanks for your question. We are currently evaluating that. Obviously, with the changes from the governor and the CDC guidelines, we are very close to coming back to in-person meetings where we will be opening it up for, for full in-person. We still have a little bit more work to solve for that, but our goal is to go back to the meetings that we had in-person pre-pandemic. As some people might recall, we did, we did actually video record those meetings prior, prior to Zoom and prior to the pandemic in January and February. It is the board's goal to go back to that format. But more to come when we have those plans finalized. We'll certainly share them with the public, but that is, that is our stated plan. I just don't know when we'll actually get there. We certainly want to go back to, to that, having people in, in person and obviously not be sitting as I am with, with headphones on right now. So more to come and as soon as we have that, we'll share that publicly. Dipdikana, you're up next. Dipdik, good evening. How are you tonight?
Hi, Doug. I'm well. How are you?
I am very well. Thanks for joining.
All right. So first off, I want to say thank you for conducting that traffic study. I think it definitely highlighted some issues that needed detention. So I'm glad that happened. My question is, you know, given the amount of money that I just heard is sitting in the capital reserve and there seem to be no defined projects that the, the money is earmarked for. And also given that our property taxes have only been going up, have the board members considered returning some of these funds to the taxpayers? And if they have not given that consideration, why not?
Great, Dipdik. Thanks for your question. Every year that we go through the budget, the finance and facilities committee takes a very hard look at what is the minimum amount of money that we can raise from taxpayers to run our school district, both for its current operations and to invest in the future. So we look at that every single year and our ability to minimize the tax impact to residents while still running a very quality school system. We, we continue to put money into the capital reserve. We spend, on average, probably between seven hundred and fifty thousand and a million dollars on capital projects each year in our regular operating budget for the variety of different projects that we do. The reason we put the money into the capital reserve is because when we want to do longer-range projects, where we can't do that in one, out of one operating budget. But the answer to the question is yes, we look at that every single year. As Donna mentioned, it's an up-to amount. But as part of the budgeting cycle, we do look at the capital reserve and we are very, very aware with the impact that we have on the taxpayers and are very conscious as trying to minimize that. And when we can, quote, return money to them or not spend money in a certain area, we do that as well.
Thank you.
Thanks for your question. Todd Nigery, you're up next. Good evening, Todd.
Yes, good evening. I just have a few follow-ups and a couple of points to make. You know, recently, all across the country in the news, parents are challenging school boards right now. And I think that that's actually a very good thing because frankly, you know, I just want to basically state that, you know, and, and kind of remind everyone that everyone here works for the community and your actions, your methods, they're all accountable. And please take note what is happening around our country right now. And I hope and I pray that Berkeley Heights does not become one of these communities because I have a lot of faith in the school district that I moved here for. But, you know, when I hear of the number of teachers and that number continues to go up, who are leaving our district, that's very concerning. And whether it's a result of the reconfiguration, a result of retiring, you know, our district is great because of the educators who make it great. And I want to be very, very clear that as a parent, I support them. And I want to make sure that we are recognizing that they, you know, we are, I think we're almost up to thirty and that's concerning. You know, and any organization that has thirty departures, regardless of why, I think should really take note of that. Additionally, I'd like to also ask, the fact that the traffic study tonight was another example, frankly, of parents being misinformed. You know, again, this should have been done ahead of time, ahead of the plan of the presentation. And now to add that on to a creation of a position as a result of the change, that's now going to employ the superintendent's family member is kind of frankly just pouring salt all over the wound. Are we really serious about this? Sorry, it just seems very, very off. I also believe there is not clarity in our bylaws regarding permanent versus temporary employment as it relates to family members. Can you please share directly with me where this is stated in our bylaws? Again, your plan stated to increase walkability. How is it possible that Doug, this evening, stated that it will be addressed later in the summer? But this was part of your plan and you still can't speak to it? A plan that you all rolled out, that you all, as a majority, voted for. Doug, you just said you didn't want to give a plan with piece part, but that's exactly what you're doing right here. Why can you not speak about this now? As you said, you were addressing it. So again, how are you increasing walkability with your plan? I just don't see how it happens when you're taking half of the town and asking them to go up the hill, quite frankly. And last, I'd like to ask for clarification about where the library intern job was posted internally, meaning for staff only or externally, so that the public just couldn't apply for this. I, I just find it hard that we couldn't have found parental volunteers that might have been interested in this before we opted for the employment recommendations that were just approved by the board based on the superintendent's recommendation this evening. Thank you very much.
Great, Todd. Thanks for your comments. The first couple of yours were comments. I'll just let those go as is. Your, your first question was, are we serious about this plan? The answer is of course, yes, we are very serious about the plan. And yes, the traffic study and the walkability that I talked about getting done this summer was not complete by the April 29th meeting. Our goal was to present as much of a comprehensive plan as we could at that date. We obviously did not have every single element. So yes, you are correct. We did not have every single element of the plan on April 8th and when we voted on April 29th. Knowing that, we knew that we were going to continue working on that, both the traffic study that you heard about tonight, as well as the walkability. Walkability is something that we do every summer. We do that every summer with the police department. So getting that done this summer is no different than what we did last year, the year before, and every year previous to that. Regarding Dr. Marley, I, I don't know, can you speak to the permanent versus temporary? And whether we have that specifically in our, in our bylaws?
I'm, I'm not sure if it's definitely in our bylaws. I did, I have, obviously, we employ a great deal of our staff members' children in the district during the summer. So I did reach out to our attorney and he gave us advice that if temporary, like a substitute teacher, a, an intern during the summer or anything along those lines is fine. A permanent position such as a teacher, I could not hire for someone who was related to me. The board could not hire someone who was related to them for a permanent position. But a temporary minimum wage position is perfectly acceptable.
And I think, can you just?
It was posted on the website.
And I think, yeah, the last piece was, you know, so you mentioned AppleTrack, which is something that we know, which is kind of A P P L I T R A K. AppleTrack is a, is a tool that we use in all of our positions, regardless of whether they're summer positions, full-time positions, administrators, teachers, para, are all posted on AppleTrack for everybody to see.
Yes.
Any resident and anybody outside who checks our website can see open positions. Is that correct?
Absolutely, absolutely.
Thank you very much. Todd, thank you for your question. Next up is Lou, is Lou Silvers. Lou, good evening. How are you tonight?
Hello, can you hear me?
I got you now, Lou. Good evening. How are you?
All right. I'm doing well. I think you know what I'm going to talk about. I did reach out to a few of you. Doug, thanks for getting back to me on this. But I wanted to address some of my concerns to the larger audience here. I'm a parent of several young children, some of who will be impacted, you know, they'll all be impacted by the districting plan. And I just want to raise some of the concerns about the K to two parents and the redistricting. You know, you know, some of the walking distance are fairly far. You know, we're all the way up the hill on Sutton Drive and we're districted to Woodruff, which is the furthest of the four schools. And I just want to let you know some of the, you know, additional concerns that you may not have thought of because I know that the board members, I don't think have any, maybe a mistake and have any, you know, children in that younger cohort. So just wanted to bring up some of these concerns. We narrowly miss out on the free busing. And I didn't walk the route. It is not an easy walk. It is not a safe walk for a kindergartner, in my opinion. You know, I do think, you know, a lot of the concerns for the three to five schools were brought up about, you know, keeping people in the same place. But, you know, as a result of that, some of the K to two students do have fairly long walks from certain neighborhoods to their new elementary schools. And this creates some concerns. It gives us, you know, three choices. One is for my kid to do a, a walk, which I would deem as fairly dangerous and unsafe. Two, have, you know, me walk with him and that's like a, almost a four-mile round trip walk. Three, pay for busing, which is, you know, discounted this year, but, you know, only, that's only for one year going forward. Or drive past two, one or two other schools, which may have traffic concerns of their own, you know, to get to the furthest elementary school. You know, for younger kids who are in that cohort, it is especially difficult. You know, I do have someone, will have kids going to the K to two and three to five schools. I can tell from, you know, experience that my three to five, three, third to fifth grader can do things that my K to two can't. That's walk to school for a group of friends. You know, ride his bike, even carpooling. You may not realize that, but car seats, you know, the requirements have got a lot different over the last decade or so. Makes it fairly difficult if you want to carpool to a K to two school. So really, the busing is our only good option. So I just wanted to put that out there, that a lot of parents of these, of younger kids who may have very long walks, who would have previously, previously gotten bussed, are going to be remote from their schools. And while I do appreciate the one-year discount in busing, that's only for one year. And, you know, I was hoping for something a, a longer term or some leniency on that two-mile rule, two-mile rule for some of the longer and what I deem as, as dangerous walks for our youngest students. So just want to put it out there. Thanks for your time. And I think, you know, in my discussions, I know a lot of parents of some of the younger kids have similar concerns.
Great, Lou. Thanks for your comments. Lou and I have, have spoken and, and as you know, I, I agree with you. There are a couple of neighborhoods in our, in our community where, where there are young children in the K to two grade schools that have a long walk, where, where Lou lives on Sutton Drive is one of them. There are other ones as well. Obviously, with our newer realignment, every student from K to five is going to go to two schools. One is likely to be closer to where you live and the other one is likely to be a little bit further. Lou brings up a, a number of good points. And so regarding the, the two statements he made is, so the board has made a commitment to do the subsidy for, for one year. That will be revisited by the board next year regarding what the Department of Ed does regarding the, the busing. There's a very strict guidelines for that. And as, as I shared with Lou, if we were to make any exceptions for that, it would be virtually impossible to determine where to make exceptions or where, where it's not. And I know Lou has talked with our, with our transportation. Lou, thanks for your, for your questions tonight. With that, I will close the citizens' hearing for tonight. Is there any other business to come before the board?
Yes, I have one thing.
Robert?
I, I guess I want to ask Dr. Marley, what, what are we doing about June, Juneteenth going forward? Are we incorporating that into anything, the fact that it's a holiday in most places?
Well, that's, you know, it just happened, right? So that's something that we will have to bring back to the DEI task force as well as the diversity committees to talk about what's, what we're doing.
And will that be a day off? Just, I mean, DEI aside, but?
I doubt it. We, we have a lot of federal holidays that we do not take off.
Yes, I saw in tonight's paperwork Washington's birthday and Lincoln's birthday. I could not believe I saw that.
Well, I know this year it was after the school year ended also, the Juneteenth holiday. When I know this year was after the school year ended also, the Juneteenth holiday.
I think that was the nineteenth on a Saturday. Next year is the same? Just so maybe we look at it.
Yeah, absolutely. We'll get in front of it. Absolutely. Good thing to bring up, though. I appreciate it.
Other, other, other business to come before the board?
I would like to just thank everyone. I, it's been a privilege to work here for fifteen years. I really appreciate the administration, the cooperation we get from the board, the collaboration that we have. And I think the board members don't get all the recognition that they need. Everyone puts in so much work. Angela and those personally, it's easy to sit in the audience and watch everybody, but when you sit at the table, these people spend so much time preparing for these meetings. They ask us a lot of questions and sometimes we think they drive us crazy, but they always bring up different points of view and we really do appreciate that. And again, it's been a privilege to work with all of you for fifteen years and previous board members also.
When's your last day? The next, next week? Next, the thirtieth?
Wednesday, yes. So.
I just want to second what Chris said earlier on. You should do your best and enjoy your retirement and dearly miss you. It's been a pleasure working with you.
Thank you.
I think you should stay longer. You should stay longer because I never got to work with you that long.
It's required. They didn't tell you?
I think we tried, but she was ready to go.
Best of luck to you, Donna.
No, and same thing from a personal, yeah, again, thank you very much, Donna, for your help. Looking at the overview of, of Mountain Park reminded me of the first time we worked together when putting, looking at solar panels in the district and everything. And we tried to work with the Union County and that didn't work, but we ended up able to get the panels there. So again, it's been a fun run, you know, when I was a young, young resident of Berkeley Heights, working with you and all these years later, never thought I would have been on the school board. It's been great. And one new business item, did we get the twenty-one, twenty-two counter up on the website yet? I know, I had, I thought the old kind of still there, just, I know a lot of people starting to plan ahead. Okay, thank you. I couldn't find it the other day.
Okay, seeing other, no other business. Before I take a motion to adjourn, as I mentioned previously, our next meeting was a unscheduled meeting. It is now scheduled for Thursday evening, July twenty-second. And the, the primary focus of that meeting will be for the board to interview potential candidates for the replacement of the open seat on the board. That'll be Thursday night, I'm sorry, July twenty, I said June by accident, excuse me. Thursday night, July twenty-second will be our next meeting. Again, the primary focus of that will be to a replacement of that. With that, I will take a motion.
He has a question.
Robert? Regular time, regular time, seven-thirty or regular time.
No exec session?
Stay tuned. We might, we might need, I will, I will let you know whether we need an exec session for the night. I would say, I would say plan for it. I would say plan for a regular exec session.
Six-thirty exec session. Six-thirty or seven?
Seven.
Seven, okay.
Plan, plan for seven o'clock. If that changes, we'll let you know.
Rest for the wicked.
I'm sorry. With, with that, I will wish the board, the administration, our entire community, enjoy a summer. I know a lot of, of course, our students are off of the summer, but I hope everybody has a restful and enjoyable summer. For those that join us on July twenty-second, we'll see you then. Not have a good rest of the night and enjoy your summer. Good night.
Good night.